include New York, Salt Lake City, San Francisco, Portland, and Seattle. Boarding up abandoned properties with plywood may soon be a thing of the past as L.A. city leaders take a look at a new, more community-friendly approach to blight. Yana Kay has more.
I've asked Jordan to sling the hammer. Jordan has a demo.
Using a sledgehammer and swinging as hard as he can, this Council District 10 city employee can't shatter this plastic.
We've had a couple of people take a whack at it with sledgehammers and baseball bats, and it stays secure.
The demonstration was hosted by Council President Herb Wesson at an abandoned home in mid-city L.A. to showcase a new product created by the company SecureView. Company executives said the plastic material could be used instead of plywood to secure and protect abandoned properties. They say the product has the look of a traditional window.
The moment you put on the plywood board, you were inviting vandalism, you're advertising the properties, they can come and get me.
But company officials say this patented, state-of-the-art technology will help stop the blight that follows and keep intruders and squatters from coming inside. And for neighbors, it's a winning proposition.
Once they're boarded, you still don't know who's inside of them. People find ways to get past, you know, the plywood. So if you could see inside and see who's in there, that would be a big improvement. So yeah, this is an important product.
For a squatter looking to get inside, company execs say the flexible material is unbreakable and can't even be cut with a knife.
If it was really cleaned up, that people would walk past and just not even look at it.
It looks like a normal house.
Yes, it does.
Company officials say by improving the aesthetics of the home, the product can also help maintain the value of home prices in the neighborhood. Council President Wesson says he is open to a discussion about how the city can use this product to secure vacant properties within Los Angeles. I'm Yana Kay for L.A. This Week.
Los Angeles is currently not using the product, but SecureView said it has already installed its product in 5,000 homes across the country. Traveling can be stressful for anyone, but for those with special needs, it can be even more of a daunting endeavor. But now, a new program launched by LAX is doing its part to make flying that much friendlier for those with autism and for their families. Here's Rasha Goell.
Passengers with autistic family members can now feel a little more at ease when traveling. Thanks to a new program at LAX called the Flight Experience Program, families can get better prepared for future travel through services offered by Los Angeles World Airports.
Families are hesitant to fly because they do not know how their loved ones may react inside a terminal and do not know how people will respond to their situation.
Our students that have autism, they have problems with transition, and it becomes very scary. And so this way, they get to practice these skills.
Los Angeles World Airports has partnered with several airlines for their program. The airlines will be holding mock experiences to provide autistic passengers and their families a chance to see what traveling is like. For many of the kids here, it's their first time coming to the airport.
He has a fear of heights. He didn't even want to come. So being able to come through this step process without any fear and with the help of all the employees, this is excellent.
This is great, knowing we can see how he's going to handle, you know, if we actually go into a trip.
Families had the chance to go through TSA screening, sit at the gates, and board the flight, giving them a realistic experience of traveling. Through the program, TSA officers and airport police are also taught about autism and possible behavioral issues that may occur at the airport or in flight, so they are better prepared.
You definitely need patience in this field, especially with children with autism or even any person with disabilities, being very respectful of their disabilities, not outing them in public, different things like that.
Lawa has also initiated an autism self-identification program that allows people with autism to wear a specially-designed sticker in the shape of a puzzle piece.
It will alert airport personnel, or airport police, or the airline that the individual has autism, and in turn, it'll let us know how to better serve them.
A new adventure waiting in the wings. In Los Angeles, I'm Rasha Goell for L.A. This Week.
And LAX also made the day of a very special kid named Noah recently. Noah's always had a wish, and as Yana Kay tells us, local law enforcement officials and the Make-A-Wish Foundation helped make that dream come true.
And then we put our helmet on here. If it gets too, if it gets too heavy, you can always take it off.
Eight-year-old Noah Cohen is being lathered with attention from Los Angeles firefighters.
I just love it.
Noah, who was born with a rare condition and has endured two dozen surgeries since birth, has always wanted to become a first responder in Los Angeles. A dream that was sparked by watching the show Emergency. And thanks to the Make-A-Wish Foundation, his dream became a reality.
He's super excited. He loves anything related to emergency rescue, and so just to have them all together in one place is pretty incredible.
The family flew in from Vermont earlier in the day and enjoyed a hero's welcome at LAX from the Los Angeles Airport Police, L.A. County Sheriff, and Los Angeles Police and Fire Departments.
We're glad to have you here.
And emergency personnel certainly pulled out all the stops to make sure Noah felt like a true member of the team. After riding shotgun in a fire truck, sheriff's deputies dressed Noah in one of their bulletproof vests and helmet. And he also checked out the inside of an armored vehicle.
This is a fantastic dream come true for my son.
The mission of the Make-A-Wish Foundation is to grant the wishes of children with life-threatening conditions and put a smile on their faces. And for little Noah, his smile was certainly well-deserved. I'm Yana Kay for L.A. This Week.
LAPD officers are one step closer to using on-body cameras in the field. The former LAPD headquarters could become an official L.A. landmark and other headlines in city beat. The Board of Police Commissioners voted three to one to approve rules governing the use of wearable cameras for LAPD officers, such as when the cameras must be turned on, how long the recordings should last, and how the devices are to be maintained and inspected. The Los Angeles Police Protective League, the union representing LAPD officers, supports these policies, saying that video is beneficial in providing a reliable account of events but should be used in conjunction with other evidence. Opponents say the policies do not address issues such as whether the footage will be released to the public or how the department will be able to use that footage. A special ceremony in honor of recently-retired Metro CEO Art Leahy and his family. MTA and Mayor Eric Garcetti unveiled the plaque that dedicates Metro's Division III busyard at Cypress Park in Leahy's name. The recognition commemorates the Leahy family's combined 125 years of service to Metro and its agencies.
It's been a thrill to be at Metro. It's been the best six years of my career. We have done things no one else in the country has done.
I know every single day when folks here show up to work, they will look up and say, "An operator became the chief." And every single day, my work matters.
Leahy began his transit career as a bus driver for the Southern California Rapid Transit District back in 1971. LAPD's former headquarters, Parker Center, could be designated as a historic and cultural landmark. In January, the city's Cultural Heritage Commission recommended that the eight-story tower and surrounding landscaping be given historical cultural status. This move coincides with the plan on the part of the city's Bureau of Engineering to demolish Parker Center and replace it with a bigger office tower. Conservationists say the building warrants landmark status because of its historic role in race relations and in the modernization of the policing profession. The L.A. City Council has until May 13th to grant historical status. L.A. City Attorney Mike Fuhr's office has won a temporary restraining order to keep Wilmington Medical Marijuana Dispensary, called 420 Collective, closed. Fuhr says the business is operating illegally under the voter-approved Prop D.
People who are really sick, who are suffering with cancer or other serious illnesses ought to have access to medical marijuana to alleviate their pain. But there are too many dispensaries. They were too close together. They were too close to schools and sensitive sites.
Fuhr's office is also filing civil cases against six other Wilmington businesses clustered within a six-block span of each other on Avalon Boulevard. It was casual Friday on a recent Wednesday in city council chambers as council members donned comfortable jeans in support of Denim Day, a national campaign that is part of Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Folks are encouraged to wear jeans on Denim Day to stand up against sexual violence. And that's our This Week in Tweets. @LAPDHQ tweeted this photo of Denim Day founder Patricia Giggins, Mayor Eric Garcetti, and LAPD Chief Charlie Beck. Chief Beck also tweeted several snaps. One of them says, "Great event with Patty Giggins and @Guess." Councilman Mitch O'Farrell shared this Instagram photo via Twitter of many of his council colleagues in jeans. He wrote, "In Los Angeles, taking a stand against sexual violence." It's a sign of a well-used park, worn-out play equipment, and at One Valley Park, those aging playground structures are finally going into retirement. Devonshire Park in Mission Hills is well-loved by area residents, arguably none more than longtime resident Karen, who proudly introduces herself as a professional Polynesian dancer.
I have performed here in the park a couple of years ago. I do Polynesian dance. I'm one-quarter from the island of Hawaii. My husband and I like to come over for park, for picnics and barbecues, and we've had two parties.
But that means the well-utilized park and its kids' play area were due or overdue for some much-needed upgrades.
I grew up not too far away from here. This was an area that we would come and play, and at the time, the brand-new park was really exciting. But to be able to do what we're doing here, create a new accessible format for young people to play of all ages, so that it's convenient to the community, that it's a place where you can have active and passive recreation, really is something that's very exciting.
Councilman Felipe Fuentes and the city's Recreation and Parks officials cut the ribbon on two new children's play areas designed for kids from two to 12 years old. Built-in canopies mean kids can enjoy the new slides and swings without worries about the harsh sun beaming down on them. And Karen, yes, the Polynesian dancer, who has lived here since the 1950s, says the park here on Woodman Avenue has come a long way.
This park was a vacant lot when we very first moved in, and it was wonderful. And my, we got to be a part of the voting to bring the park in. We also got to be the ones to name the park. So when you can do this kind of stuff and see this progress happening, it's a beautiful thing.
But for young Abriana, who lives close to the park, she's concerned with something much more pressing: conquering her fears.
I screwed up this one, because look, watch. See, I'm scared.
A thrill a minute at the newly refurbished Devonshire Park. Devonshire Park is located at 10230 Woodman Avenue in Mission Hills. In this week's edition of Things to Do, a pancake breakfast for a good cause, a tree giveaway, and something special for mom on Mother's Day. Fill up your tummy and show your support for the LAPD. On Saturday, May 9th, enjoy an All You Can Eat Pancake Breakfast hosted by LAPD's SOLID, which stands for Supporters of Law Enforcement in Devonshire. The Pancake Breakfast will be served from 8:00 to 11:00 a.m. with an open house from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., featuring a classic car show and face painting for kids. Tickets are $9 per person for the Pancake Breakfast. Kids three and under eat free. There is no charge for other activities. The event will be held at the LAPD Devonshire Division located at 10250 at Awanda Avenue in Northridge. Go to soliddevonshire.org. Councilmember Mitchell Englander and the group City Plants are sponsoring a free tree giveaway to city residents on Saturday, May 9th from 9:00 a.m. to noon. You can enjoy a day at the park at Northridge Park and go home with a tree to plant in your yard. There is a limit of one tree per address, and the trees will be distributed on a first-come, first-served basis while supplies last. Proof of residence in the city of L.A. is required to adopt a tree. Northridge Park is located at 18300 La Marsh Street in Northridge. Go to cityplants.org. And don't forget to spoil the mother in your life this Mother's Day. On Sunday, May 10th, the Autry National Center is taking reservations for a Mother's Day brunch at its Crossroads West Cafe for the hours of 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. The Mother's Day menu includes lemon, blueberry, and ricotta pancakes, scrambled eggs with chorizo, and savory egg sandwiches with house-roasted pork belly. The Autry is located at 4700 Western Heritage Way. To make a reservation for Mother's Day, call 323-495-4329. And that's a look at some upcoming things to do. And that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Ellen Chang. This just so happens to be my last show as anchor and producer of L.A. This Week after many wonderful years here. I want to thank you so much for tuning in and for your support during my time as host of the show. It's been a real privilege. And with that, I also want to thank all my friends here at Channel 35 and L.A. This Week. Yana Kay, one of our esteemed reporters and L.A. This Week's new anchor.
Did you know the average L.A. resident uses about 89 gallons of water each day? Challenge yourself to conserve. Turning off the faucet when you brush saves up to 10 gallons of water. Taking a five-minute or less shower saves up to 15 gallons of water. Washing only full loads of laundry saves up to 30 gallons of water. And fixing a running toilet can save up to 50 gallons of water. Keep it in mind all day, every day. It's water conservation the L.A. way.
Don't worry, Patty. This isn't going to hurt me one bit. Hi, I'm Dr. Eric Shapiro in beautiful Encino, and you're watching L.A. City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel. Open wide.[1017.88]
So again, I want to thank Mr. Bloomingfield and Mr. Coretts for being members of today's on-time caucus. Members, if you're in your offices, please report to the chambers so that we can begin today's work. Sergeants, call the members and give me their ETAs. So again, I want to thank Mr. Bloomingfield, Coretts, Laba. Good morning, good morning. Shhh. I would like to welcome you to your Los Angeles City Council meeting. The meeting today is Wednesday, May 6th. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Public is welcome. Mr. Clerk, I do believe we have a quorum. Could you please call the roll?
Bloomingfield, Bonn, Busco, Nocedio, Engener, Fuentes, Weisar, Carras, LaBange, Martinez, Ferro, Parks, Wesson. Ten members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
Okay, first order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
O'Farrell moves, Martinez seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Bloomingfield moves, Bonn in seconds. That brings us where?
Mr. President, there is a request to continue item 23 for one week. That's May 13th.
Okay, so without objection, that'll be the order?
Very good, sir. Items 1 through 11 are items noticed for public hearing.
Do we have cards?
Yes, sir. Cards on items 1 and 10.
Okay, let's hold those items. Specials, members? Let's move on. Let's vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay, now, let's move on to items 12 through 20. Uh, Mr. Clerk?
Yes, sir. Items 12 through 20 are items which public hearings have been held.
Thank you. Uh, 12 through 20, members? Any specials? Mr. Parks?
I don't want to call it special, but just have a no vote on 13.
Okay, uh, why don't we do this? Do we have any?
Cards.
Well, we don't do cards. Why don't we just vote on that one item now? Mr. Parks, so if we could pull up item 13, was it?
Yes.
Okay, on item 13, uh, let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Nine ayes, one no.
Okay, now, if, uh, members, any other specials? I don't see any, so, Mr. Clerk, let's vote on the remaining items. Let us open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Thank you. Next, uh, section?
Mr. President, that brings us to items 21 through 35. They're items which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. Cards?
Yes, sir. We have cards on items 21, 24, 28, 30, 31, 32, 33, 34, and 35.
Okay, let's hold those items and vote on the, uh, remaining items. So let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
And, Mr. President, those ordinances, uh, all the ordinances previously adopted will go over one week for second consideration unless reconsidered today for 12 members.
Well, I, I would hope that we would get to that number, so when that occurs, if you would remind me, Mr. Clerk, we'll reconsider and then vote on them again. So that brings us where?
Mr. President, that takes council back to, uh, presentation or presentations or items called special.
Mr. LaBange, you have an introduction? Well, I've heard it, but anyway, go on with your introduction.
This is Los Angeles City College class, uh, led by Professor Henry Ely. He comes down every year consistently, uh, and we have so many community colleges in Southern California. This professor, uh, is not afraid of opening any door for his students. So, uh, Professor Ely, I want to salute you with this commendation and thank you. I also want to give a hand for Bernard Parks, City College guy. This is City College Bernard. Give him a hand there for Bernard Parks, sir. I'm 71. What were you? What were you, uh, what year were you at City College? Ten years, he got it, he got it. Thank you.
Well, uh...
Mr. President?
Okay, I, I understand, uh, the, uh, Mr. Wesson, and I, I thank him on behalf of my daughter for repairing, uh, the sidewalks on Citrus Street. She said, "Make sure to let you know that." That was it.
Thank you.
But, uh, for Bernard and everybody else, I just want to say thank you, and these are the leaders of tomorrow, and they are your replacements. Thank you.
Their replacements look good.
And, uh, to the students, just to let you know, uh, one of my greatest mentors was Milt Davis, who was a City College grad, UCLA, as well as John Farrell, who, uh, sat in this seat where the president is, USC. So we got it from both sides. City College comes, give them a big hand!
Again, thank you and, and welcome. Mr., uh, O'Farrell, would you like to begin? And I need Ms. Da-da-da, Ms. Martinez, if you could, uh, help us out here? Since I see Mr. LaBange working the, the crowd, if you could take the, uh, the president's chair.
Good morning, Mr. O'Farrell, are you ready?
Good morning, I am. Last minute note here. Good morning, colleagues, and I do believe we're about to be joined by Council President Herb Wesson. Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues and guests, it gives us great pleasure to welcome all of you to City Hall for Get Fit, Don't Sit Day, sponsored by the American Diabetes Association. I am glad to stand here with Council President Wesson and the ADA as we celebrate today, May 6th, 2015, as the National Get Fit, Don't Sit Day in the city of Los Angeles.
Let's take a break.
Okay.
We have technical difficulties. Now we're cooking with gas.
Do I get, do I get take two? No, we're, we're gathered here today for this very special day, uh, which is National Get Fit, Don't Sit Day, uh, in the city of Los Angeles. Uh, diabetes is a deadly disease that strikes nearly 30 million children and adults in the U.S., and more than 86 million Americans have, uh, pre-diabetes. It's the fifth-leading cause of death in our city. Number one is heart disease, but diabetes is the number-one cause of death by heart attacks. Diabetes is on the rise, mirroring the obesity epidemic and affecting 14% of Angelenos. Some of the risk factors for type 2 diabetes are being overweight, underactive, and having a family history of the disease. And I'm remiss because I didn't mention that joining us today representing the ADA is Donna Lieberman, uh, Jennifer, um, I can't read my own writing here. Campbell, thank you. Jennifer Campbell, uh, and Cassie Schaefer. Uh, in a moment, we're going to hear from a representative of the association. Research shows that physical activity can help lower the risk of developing pre-diabetes and type 2 diabetes, as well as help people who are currently living with diabetes better manage their disease and live a healthier life. Which is why the ADA Association helped start the Get Fit, Don't Sit Day campaign, to encourage people to get up and move throughout the day, no matter where it is. And, excuse me, I just want to say that no matter who you are, no matter what your body type, no matter your age or ethnicity, fitness, uh, and the engaging in physical activity makes you healthier. This morning, on the south lawn of City Hall, along with our city family, we kicked off the day with a great energy-boosting body movement dance. That might be posted on YouTube later, who knows? Uh, as the chair of the committee that oversees health-related matters and as a former gymnast, I truly see the importance of informing our community to incorporate physical fitness and healthy eating in their daily regimen. Last year in my district, we brought together five elementary schools at Bellevue Park and Silverlake for my first annual, uh, Councilmember O'Farrell Fitness Challenge, and we will continue that. That will be an annual event, and we expect to get bigger and bigger. An increase in community awareness about the benefits of physical activity is necessary to help put a stop to the diabetes epidemic and health issues. If I may now have, uh, Council President Herb Wesson, uh, say a few words, who co-sponsored this wonderful event. Council President Wesson?
Thank you, Mr. O'Farrell, for all the work that you do. I, 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 I have to take issue, though, with you. I mean, not everybody on the council was a gymnast. I mean, Mr. O'Farrell has, like, no body fat whatsoever, and that, that's because he is very active, and he is very healthy, and he is a very caring individual. So I thank you for, uh, being really the, the spearhead, the leader on, on this issue. The ADA is a phenomenal organization that does the very best that they can to help individuals live with, cope with diabetes, looking for, uh, cures, raising money. I can't say enough positive about them. And what occurred today on the south lawn is a very important demonstration of how something as simple as dancing for several minutes a day can help you deal with this disease, coupled with diet and things of that nature. A few of the members on this council, myself included, suffer from, uh, diabetes, and that's why you'll see us attempting to keep our weight down, exercising when you can. And I'm not talking about exercising like Mr. O'Farrell, where you have to be a gymnast. All I'm talking about is maybe walking your dog five times in the morning for a half hour or 30 minutes. And you don't even have to do it at a very, very fast or brisk pace. So the exercising is, is far easier than a lot of people think. So it's, you know, to, to help, whenever I can, to highlight those that are helping to, uh, fight diabetes, control diabetes, and find a cure for diabetes, you know? That's one of my passions. So again, I want to thank the ADA. I want to thank Mr. O'Farrell for being a part of it. And I also want to just remind the public of all ages, watch what you eat. Exercise, and it doesn't have to be very taxing. Walk around. I have a neighbor who, for years, I just watch him. He goes outside, and he walks, and he's walking at about this pace. I don't know how much weight he's lost, but he is svelte. I chat with him, he's, watches his diet, and he just walks. He doesn't sweat. You don't have to. It is not, I mean, 35, 40 minutes in the morning, walk your dog. It will make a big difference. So I just wanted to say that I'm honored, Mr. O'Farrell, to partner with you, and you are a, the perfect example of fitness. Now, we all may take you in the back and beat you up later because you are, but no, he is a perfect example. Thank you for being a, a, a real partner and really caring. And folks, let's stay fit. If our First Lady can dance for six minutes, and really dance for six minutes, I'm sure that we can come up with something that we're comfortable with, that we can do, that would help send a message that we want to fight diabetes, and we want people to be in the best shape that they can be. ADA, God bless you, and thank you for all your work.
Thank you, Council President Wesson. Uh, next, we have, uh, we're joined by, uh, the dedicated staff of the ADA. Um, and we have with us Mr. George Small, uh, Los Angeles Community Leadership Board, to say a few words. Mr. Small?
Thank you, President Wesson and the, uh, City Council members. Since our inception almost 75 years ago, the American Diabetes Association has promoted the importance of healthy lifestyle choices, choices, as an important component and a way to manage, control, and prevent diabetes. Through the National Get Fit, Don't Sit Day, the Association is calling on all Americans, yes, even those with diabetes, to get up off of their workplace chairs. Whether it's biking to work or walking up a few stairs at your office, it's time for Americans to get active. We are pleased, very pleased, that the city of Los Angeles has joined our efforts.
Thank you, Mr. Small. And so today, Wednesday, May 6th, uh, we recognize National Fit, Get Fit, Don't Sit Day in the city of Los Angeles, and we want to thank the ADA for your dedication to help and fitness and informing the community of this important, uh, important initiative. So congratulations, and, uh, here we are.
Thank you, Mr. O'Farrell. We have two members on the queue. Mr. Englander.
You know, you know, Madam President, before Mr. Englander speaks, Mr. O'Farrell and I really want to thank our staffs for participating, uh, in this. I think I had four or five staff members, and Mitch had a lot as well. So to the staff, thank you very much, and if members of my staff have hurt or twisted something, you're going to have to loan me three of your staff to replace.
And we had a few from Paul Coretts's staff as well join us this morning, so, well done.
And maybe next year, we can have a spin challenge, and we can have Mr. Bonn lead us in the class, because I heard you were a fabulous spin instructor. Spin class. Mr. Mr. Englander?
Yes, thank you, and that might be able to, we can get some footage for that for the, for the next roast, perhaps. I wanted to, uh, Mr. O'Farrell, Mr. Wesson, thank you so much for bringing the ADA here and recognizing the great work that they do. Um, as many of you know, uh, I have been involved with ADA now for about 20 years. Uh, and in fact, we've had 18 years, for the last 18 years, we've started a tradition here in the city of Los Angeles, which has become the signature event, not just in L.A., not just in California, but nationally for ADA, with the Los Angeles Political Roast. And many of you have subjected yourself, as recently as, uh, uh, Councilmember Mike Bonn, uh, but many of you have participated and been active. Mr. Coretts, the previous year before that, uh, Mr. LaBange, so many that, uh, and, and, uh, that have subjected themselves with the signature Councilmember, Mr. Wesson, who's participated, I think, in more of the roasts. Uh, the important thing on that is that this has given not just ADA here in L.A., uh, but the opportunity for elected officials, the staff, the city, the stakeholders, to subject themselves, not only, uh, to hu-humor, um, but to open up the minds of so many into such a great cause, to raise millions of dollars for research and to find a cure. And, uh, and I know sometimes that hot seat, um, can, uh, can get, uh, pretty tough, and I really, truly appreciate it. Uh, personally, as one of the co-chairs, I know that Harvey and Arnie do as well, that you all put yourselves out there for such a worthy cause. Uh, I'm very grateful, thank you.
And if I may, Madam President, what Mitchell didn't mention is I think you raised over $600,000 this year.
Yes.
With the one event. So, you know, we're heading toward a million dollars just for this one event, so it's, it's incredible cause, so congratulations.
Mr. LaBange?
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Fit, there, uh, O'Farrell, Mr. Fit, and Mr. Wesson, very good, and the ADA and all that. I just think it's so important. Personally, I walk every day in Griffith Park, at half since 1978. And it's not necessarily, as you say, I don't run up the hill, uh, but I walk, and the mental, the, the mental fitness is so important. But for ADA and all the work you did, Mr. Englander spoke, I just wanted to thank everybody. But also, I wanted to give a shout-out to our city employees, because the good thing that they do on their breaks is they get off their desk, and you could see them walking around the second floor, uh, throughout the area there. It's a real good thing to do, just to walk and get away, not only for mental fitness, but also for your physical fitness. So thank you for always being there. There is a giant correlation, obviously, for what we eat, but the biggest correlation was in 1978, I believe, when the Proposition 13 came in and... was in 1978, I believe, when the Proposition 13 came in and schools stopped having physical education full-time throughout. That's the biggest hill we've got to climb again. And I love our First Lady, and I don't think I can do six minutes. Could you do six minutes, Mr. Wesson?
With her?
Oh, with her, okay, all right. All right, Fabian, I love you, Fabian. Okay, that's Mrs. Wesson. I love my wife Bridget, too. All right, everybody, thank you. Good job.
Very good. Let's go around, let's go here first.
Thank you very much, Mr. Clerk, what's next?
Madam President, at this time, would you like to reconsider the orders for 12 members?
Yes.
Very good. Those would be Items 2 through 5, 12, 22, and 25 through 27. We should first vote on reconsideration and then on the matters themselves.
First vote is for reconsideration. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 eyes.
What's next, Mr. Clerk?
Now, those matters are now before you.
Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 eyes.
Thank you.
Madam President, that brings us to Item Number 1, called Special for Cards.
Actually, let's go to Item 21st instead.
Madam President, perhaps Item 24?
I'm sorry, 21st. Item 21.
Very good. Item 21, called Special for Cards.
Arnold Sachs? Yes, Mr. Arnold Sachs, I just called you. Item 21? Yeah, you filled out a card for Item 21. 21.
Yeah, but you said you were calling Item 24.
Yeah, I corrected myself. Item 21.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry about that. Go ahead.
Good morning. Thank you, Arnold Sachs. Very quickly, on Item 21, your communication establishing a hearing date for the maintenance of the Channel Street and Pariseo Street, Number 1 Lighting District, comes back again to language that the city uses in its motions and its communications. This is for the maintenance, a hearing. But when you have the ordinances in front of the city council, as you have here today, several items, 1 through 10 or 1 through 11, you ask for protest about the improvement and maintenance of lighting districts. So you don't include the language of the improvement for the lighting district when you call for the hearings. Why not? Shouldn't the people be informed of that? It's maybe a small part of the operation, maybe a big part of the operation. We know from listening to the city council that they operate openly and transparent, and we also know that's a lie.
Mr. Clerk, there are no more cards on Item 21.
Very good. Madam President, would you like to open the roll?
Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 eyes.
Let's go to Item 24.
That's Item 24, called Special for Cards.
Sean, Item 24.
Yes, good morning. Item 24, I support.
Thank you. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 eyes.
Next item, Item 30.
That's Item 30, called Special for Cards.
Mr. Walsh?
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or J. Walsh Confidential, tweeting @HollywoodDems. This is Item 30. As I've said before, the first time I set foot on the Hollywood Walk of Fame was 1966. You could eat off the sidewalk those days, and that was when the original mayor, Sam Yordi, was mayor. That's how far back I go. The Hollywood Walk of Fame is filthy. It's an insult to Sofia Vergara that they're putting her star in the filthy, despicably, garbage-ridden, because the trust, who pays themselves huge amounts of money, the Hollywood Walk of Fame Trust, do not wash the street. Go and check our website. And the press doesn't give a syphilitic rat's ass about the Hollywood Walk of Fame, HollywoodHighlands.org.
Mr. Clerk, there's no more cards on Item 30. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 eyes.
If you go now to Item Number 31.
Item 31, called Special for Cards.
Eric Previn?
President Martinez, it is Eric Previn, a resident from CD2, the lovely Studio City area where we very much appreciate the television and movie industry. It is where I have buttered my bread for many, many years. And I would like to say thank you to the city council for referencing Melissa McCarthy, who really is a champion in the field of comedy. She is very, very funny. The movie The Heat is of note. I think many of us remember the hilarious scene with her and Sandy Bullock. One plays an FBI agent, the other plays a kind of city detective, and they are, it is a very funny movie. Mr. O'Connell, Dion, will you confirm that this is definitely on point and that that is a hilarious movie? Come on, sir. It is, let's own up to the simple facts. That is, that is a good one. And anybody who wants to dispute that, Ms. Martinez is laughing, which I do find slightly inappropriate, man, because you are the council president.
Please stick to these items.
No, no, it's fine, it's fine. I don't want to admonish the leader. That would be inappropriate. But I want to say to Justin and Herb, who are also funny, there's a great sense of humor...
You are not speaking on the item. Item 31 is what you signed up to speak on.
31 is Melissa McCarthy, the comedian? Do you remember the scene in, I think it was the wedding, the big wedding movie that was very funny with Kristen Wiig? They have a scene on an airplane, which Dion remembers is very funny, where she, I believe she was very escalated in terms of her enthusiasm for the partner who she had met at the wedding, and they, she is raunchy, would be the right term, but hilarious. And I think that the raunchiness and hilarity does dovetail to our meeting and Mr. Wesson, because Mr. Kerkorian, a couple weeks ago, was very upset that one of these guys used an expletive.
He is not talking about this item.
Let me go back to Melissa McCarthy. Thank you. Comedy, guys, is a tool, okay? Mr. Wesson is not a tool, because that would be disrespectful, but Mr...
Thank you very much. Next speaker, Mr. Hunt.
I think I want to get a roll with her. This leading actress lady, I think I want to get a roll with her. I think this is comedy, and I think this is very funny down at City Hall. AD, don't you think I should have a roll with her?
He is not talking about this item.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Mr. Herman.
Madam Speaker, I did sign up as Al Kowarizny, and we want to celebrate Mr. Kerkorian. Ms. Melissa McCarthy, on the Hollywood Walk of, as John Walsh puts it, the insult of shame, because you do not bother to fix, enhance, and brighten the sidewalks on Hollywood, Mr. City Attorney, because you're afraid that the lawsuits by the American Disability Act will infringe on this memorial dedication, you all listening, Melissa McCarthy at 6927 Hollywood Boulevard. So I'm going to hold my time to the one minute and finish reminding you that I just spelled my name as K-H-W-A-R-I-Z-N-I for the record. Thank you, and good morning.
There are no more cards from Item 31. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 eyes.
Next item, Mr. Clerk, Item 34.
Madam President, that's Item 34, called Special for Cards.
Mr. Walsh?
John Walsh, blogging at J. Walsh Confidential, Number 34. This is, anytime you see something here where they're going to issue bonds to be held on, this is the TFRM money, tax equity, this is an affordable housing unit, waive, the word here is waive, W-A-I-V-E in capital letters. Once you waive all the bond policies, and that's the law, on this project, something smells rotten. This is a lawless project. Waive, and believe me, some of the biggest crooks build a low-cost housing. Why? They're not going to answer anything. But I just want everyone to know out there that these bond policies are toilet paper to them. Waive the bond policies of the city.
Having no more cards on Item 34. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 eyes.
Mr. Clerk, next item, Item 35.
That's 35, called Special for Cards.
Mr. Byron Barajas?
All right, now, this item, provide any support to the people of Naples as they begin to recover from the April 25, 2015, 7.8 massive earthquake, and that the city urged its residents to donate to aid organizations on the ground in Naples that are providing essential services to the people of Naples in the wake of this massive earthquake. Now, my comment on this is, the following is, that Naples is a country like others, which are just underdeveloped, and the fact that a tragedy that has taken many lives means that we have to look at the problem with, it's only one issue here, development. These countries who suffer the destructive force of nature, it's only one issue here. Why did these people and others, what's the issue? Development. If they had an infrastructure, just like in other countries, they would not be suffering these death tolls, for any reason. I refer people to a booklet, which is called "The New Silk Road Becomes the World Land Bridge." And this is a 300-plus report, which is basically world development, which includes this country, Naples. You could travel from Los Angeles all the way to Africa with bullet trains, or you could go to Southern Latin America. It's world development.
Next speaker, John Walsh.
Item 35, John Walsh tweeting at Hollywood Dems. Please, what, this is not Nepal. People are starving and dying in this city. If you want personally, any of you, to open your wallets or open your office holder accounts and make contributions to Nepal, and believe me, out of your office holder accounts, Nepal isn't going to get one red cent. It says, "Provide any support to the people of Nepal as long as it doesn't involve money as they begin to recover." So if you want to bleed, if your heart wants to bleed, up here, they're all wealthy, and you're not going to get a dime out of these people from Nepal. That you're trying to exploit them is sick.
Mr. LeBon?
Thank you, Madam President. Just want you all to know, in the next months, Nepal and Kathmandu and all the areas suffered, whatever your community groups want to do, also deal with a variety of the American Red Cross, reach out, because it's going to be a long time in recovery. In addition, we want to thank the Los Angeles County Fire Urban Search and Rescue Team, which was dispatched, and all the other national, from the United States as well, international has helped in this tragic incident that hit Nepal. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. LeBon. There are no more speakers on the queue. Mr. Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 eyes.
Next item, Item 1.
That's Item 1, called Special for Cards.
Wayne, is he here? Mr. Wayne is not here. Next speaker, Mr. Walsh. Mr. Walsh passes. Next speaker, Mr. Herman. Mr. Herman passes. Mr. Hunt. Mr. Hunt, Item 1. Seeing no more speaker cards on Item 1. Mr. Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 eyes.
Mr. Clerk, next item, Item 28.
28, called Special for Cards.
Mr. Herman? Item 28, Mr. Herman. Thank you very much. Mr. Arnold Sachs, Item 28.
Just thank you again, Arnold Sachs, and it's really important sometimes to really read these agenda items so that you can see the misconception that occurs sometimes in city council. That's another lightweight item on the council agenda, but what's important here is it mentions this elevation, this glass tower, whatever. It's on the back of a sidewalk, but when you use legalese and some of your other items, it's the right-of-way. You talk about sidewalk repair, you don't talk about sidewalk, you don't talk about right-of-way repair. Be consistent in your governance. Be consistent in your language, because those little inconsistencies, they add up, and you hear, what's a penny here, what's a penny there? Keep in mind, a 99-cent store didn't raise your rates at 99 cents.
He is not talking about this item.
Next speaker on Item 28, Mr. Walsh. Mr. Walsh's passes. Seeing no more cards on Item 28. Mr. Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
15 eyes.
Mr. Clerk, next item, Item 10.
Madam President, that's Item 10, called Special for Cards.
Sean?
I am against it.
Thank you, Sean. Seeing no more cards for Item 10. Mr. Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
15 eyes.
Next item, Item 32. Next item, item thirty-two.
That's thirty-two called Special for Cards.
Sean. Sean passes. Next speaker, Eric Previn on item thirty-two.
Greetings, it's Eric, oh, it's Eric Previn, a city resident from District Two in Studio City. This is like bingo, okay, because we are calling off numbers, people are checking their cards, nobody, I would recommend that, since this is a major public meeting of one of the greatest-
Sir, you need to stick to the item. You signed up to speak to item thirty-two.
I have thirty-two. So bingo, I got it. I got thirty-two, and what I'm saying is, it's the West L.A. Municipal Building, which is a nice building, actually, and Sheila Kuehl, who was a very good colleague of mine in a campaign, an election, actually, is going to have her office, along with the office of Ted Lieu, and if I'm not mistaken, not Waxman. Yeah, Ben Allen, good guy. These guys are going to get what Mr. Krikorian is describing as significantly reduced rates for their rent, and it's not him, I'm just using him as the budget finance guy. The city is providing those nice rates. And I guess we are pleased about the government cooperating nicely with one another, but we are also very vigilant about the conflict that exists between the city and the county. Yesterday, actually today, just before I go to the blistering criticism, I want to say at item eighteen today, which I'm not allowed to speak on, so, Mr. O'Connell, please, no, let's confirm, I am not allowed to speak on item eighteen, but this is a park that Supervisor Hilda Solis has contributed five-hundred thousand-
He is not talking about this item.
No, no, no complimenting the supervisors in the county office giveaway. Come on, turn it back on, and I'll finish. Okay, so the building is, the county is going to take some of the building in the city property, and what I was trying to compliment was the supervisor who's going to put together a wellness park. Dion, don't shut a man down at a wellness park. It's five-hundred thousand, she's giving it to the city, and they're going to pick up the maintenance!
He is not talking about, I am thirty-two.
All right, I'll go back, I'll go back. Let me go back to the, let me go back to the building, which is a nice-
You're done, Mr. Previn. Thank you very much. Next speaker, Mr. Herman. Sir, you're done. Thank you very much. Mr. Herman, you're next.
You are the conductor of this business, not the city attorney, in violation of the Brown Act against this gentleman, Mr. Eric. But again, we're resolving an issue here regarding the lease agreement regarding the municipal building located at West Los Angeles Municipal Building, one-six-four-five Cornith Avenue in the Valley, Los Angeles, California, zip code nine-hundred-twenty-five. Ted Lieu and Ben Allen, you must sit down with Crooked Krikorian and deal with this conflict of interests and issues here regarding agreements to execute the lease arrangements. Do you ever find it a challenge to forgive, or especially hard when someone has done us deliberate harm on a lease? And the war on violence and the injustice on these leases, Mr. Senator Allen and Lieu? Do something, do something. Madam Chair, you may have your three seconds. Thank you, Dion.
Next speaker, Mr. Hunt. Are you speaking on this item, sir?
Shazam, I'm not for the lease. Thank you there, this is Mr. Michael Hunt there. Go on.
No more speakers on item thirty-two. Mr. Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fifteen eyes.
Next item, item thirty-three.
Madam President, that's item thirty-three called Special for Cards.
Mr. Herman. Item thirty-three.
Mr. Weezer Price, relative to a street vacation on the area's three feet wide by sixty feet long on the street frontage of Eleventh Street in downtown regarding the glass tower, the new expensive towers that you, the taxpayers, indulge on, on the sales of this property off of Seventh and Fig, Mr. City Attorney. But to remind you that the most important mathematical tool ever devised on that premises underpins every facet of science and algebra to remove and repair, replace, alter, and correct a sidewalk, again, a three-hundred-and-fifty-six feet above the back of the sidewalk, to direct the Bureau of Engineering and any other appropriate city department, bureau of agencies, to execute a temporary revocable permit? Revocable permit? Huh, pretty fishy. Are we in the American Disability Act agreement here? Are you in violation of the American Disability Act here? Are you incorporating the American Disability Act here, Title III, Title VI, for the alteration, the use of a access to a sidewalk in a street area located at Eleventh Street, Mr. Weezer? Are you? Batman wants you to know, L-K-H-W-A-R-I-Z-N-I, the mathematician wants to know, Mr. Keretz, figure it out, be in compliance, and do not violate the rules, the laws of the American Disability Act and incorporate it in this plan. I demand this to stop until it's corrected.
Next speaker, Mr. Arnold Sachs. Mr. Sachs, are you speaking on item thirty-three? No, sir, I'm, you need to, are you speaking on item thirty-three? If not, I'm going to go to the next speaker. Next speaker, Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or J. Walsh Confidential tweeting at Hollywood Dems. I brought this up before. This is street vacation, well, this doesn't mean a trip to Hawaii. This means the city owns property, and then the city just gives the property away here to something called Glass Tower so they can complete their footprint to build development. It's free. Other cities charge, but here, it's sixty-six feet by three feet. That's a hundred-and-ninety-eight square foot at zero dollars, we're handing over to the developer. Come here, unless you're an Asian, no Asian developers allowed in L.A., but if you're of any other race, come here and you will be given free property by the city to pollute our neighborhoods.
Next speaker, Mr. Hunt.
Let me tell you something about those people. Those people cannot do nothing there. Those people is on three-one-one. Those people can't do nothing.
There are no more cards on item thirty-three. Mr. Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fifteen eyes.
Mr. Clerk, we need to reconsider item thirty-five.
Very good, ma'am. That's a two-vote matter, we should first reconsider the matter, and then, once before you hear the speaker's card, and vote again.
So let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fifteen eyes.
Mr. Arnold Sachs.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Arnold Sachs. It is a tragedy that occurred with this earthquake, and there's probably going to be more tragedies and more, because of more earthquakes and more natural disasters. When you give your donation, and you're done writing your check or sending whatever you're going to send, take a few minutes and watch some TV. There's a really good TV show called Vice on HBO, and they just did a program about the earthquake that occurred in Haiti, and how the funds were spent that were allocated to go to Haiti. It's pretty fascinating. Bill Clinton was involved, a lot of big-time politicians were involved in the fundraising that went behind it. The name of the program is Vice. They don't call it that because of all the good that happened, they call it that because of the corruption that it exposes. So what they did is, some of the money, a lot of the money that they collected for Haiti, went for housing for the workers who came down there to do redevelopment and help out, but none of it went to the Haitian people who still live in slums. Watch the program. Nobody's saying, "Don't contribute," but contribute wisely. Use some common sense. Yeah, people are going to go, people want to help, that's a good thing, but conversely, when you get situations where millions, hundreds of millions of dollars flow into these ravaged countries, and nobody around the horse who says, "Why isn't anything being done with the funds that were raised from our city? Why is it going towards a nonprofit management? Why is it going to pay salaries to people who aren't really doing anything except writing plans?" Vice.
Thank you, Mr. Sachs. There are no more cards on item thirty-five. Mr. Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fifteen eyes.
Madam President, that takes council to general public comment.
Yes, thank you, sir. First speaker, Mr. Arnold Sachs.
That's great. Thank you for all the people that come up here and act like assholes for allowing the council eliminate the one minute for public comment. Real quick, the DWP has been in the news. We haven't heard anything from Jack Humphreyville or the ratepayer advocate regarding this audit, and how is the auditor controller enabled to announce that it isn't a violation? There's no, there's no chargeable offense here. They're looting a trust fund, or wait, is it a nonprofit? More importantly, today's newspaper, The Daily Breeze, says, "State orders water cutback." Carson pushes NFL to ensure timely construction of a stadium. Where's the water going to come from? What about the population growth? Downtown, they expect fifteen thousand new units. Where's the water going to come from? Who's taking charge here? Push-up Barack Hattie? Phony is baloney? Doesn't make sense.
Next speaker, Jose Martinez. Jose Martinez is not here. Next speaker, Sean.
I'm going to miss Tom when he leaves. He's been a good councilman. Carolyn Ramsey for City Council Four, that's who I'm supporting. If she wins, I will continue to come to the meetings. If not, goodbye, City Council, and you take over, Nury, in July. That's the only two things, I will stay. Otherwise, goodbye.
Thank you, Sean. Next speaker, John Walsh.
John Walsh at HollywoodHighlands.org. I don't moan, I don't whimper. We had a victory. One billion-dollar project stopped, the Millennium Towers. Which Way L.A. had our lawyer on there, Robert Silverstein. If you want to find out how to stop a one-billion-dollar project, this Saturday, Hollywood Presbyterian Church, corner of Yucca and Gower, ten a.m., refreshments, come and find out how we won. We're smirking, you're the losers. And vote Rue. Read today how the streets in Labange's district are like crap. Don't vote Ramsey, vote Rue, and vote for Bennett Kaiser. We're not here, "Oh, I want my brown hat, too." No, no, we won, you lost. One billion-dollar project shot to hell, and they believed you. Ha ha.
Eric Previn.
Yes, it's Eric, greetings, it's Eric Previn, a city resident from District Two in Studio City, and is, am I visible on channel thirty-five right now at all? I mean, can anybody see any of us who have raised our voices? I mean, or it's not, it's not discernible? Because I think, you know, I think that we could improve the meeting as a group if we bravely open the roll and rediscuss the sixty seconds, and also the size of the public, because I think it's a taxpayer channel. I was asking, I asked one of the gentlemen, is this, is this whole thing funded by campaign committees pooled together? Could that be the subject of a claim against, you know, but nobody wants to sue anybody because Mr. Fuer is busy, and that's why Myers Knave, with respect to Millennial or whatever that project, is probably sharpening their blades, getting ready to go after the billion-dollar misstep that took place in Hollywood that was on Alny's show. I just, I just think that you guys are terrific and can do a better job of engaging the constituents, and I'd like to thank Salita Reynolds and Dietrich Allen, who have done such a nice job on my-
Thank you very much, sir. Next speaker, Wayne. Is Mr. Wayne here? He's not here. Next speaker, Brian Barajas.
All right, LaRouchePac.com is pretty much taking the initiative to defeat the fascist bastards in our government, and those who actually have been supporting the Nazi regime ever since Bush's grandfather, Prescott Bush, funded Hitler. We are coming into the seventieth anniversary of the defeat of fascism, and I think it's pretty much evident that the destruction of economies around the world and the lack of intelligence among our citizens pretty much sets ourselves for a system of mass murder. So my job is to awaken people and defeat this shit.
Mr. Hunt, Michael Hunt.
Michael Hunt, who owned City Hall when I turned fifty-four, that's a good guess, but let me tell you what those people mean. Those people means that our eleven district is saying that they're really niggers, and this is what the Fuck White Niggers Too t-shirt mean, that there's niggers in all different races, and when your city council guy comes out and says, "Those people," that's what he's saying, "Fuck white niggers too," because he's a racist, and being a racist doesn't serve the community because he takes African-American jobs away from them, and he tries to program the Pacific Division, just like he's done. He really doesn't like black African-Americans. He hate niggers, and that's bluntly, that's what he means by "those people." He hate black niggers.
Next speaker, Mr. Herman.
Do you ever find it a challenge to forgive when they use the term "and," or especially hard when the big ears of this shoe horse here sometimes don't deliberate, but deliberate in harm and the injustice of all? Batman wants to know, for the record, City Attorney. And when Mike Fuer can't stand up to fight the war on violence, and the injustice like in Baltimore, or as John Walsh, HollywoodHighland.org, would always say, and he interprets it very well, we've become the hit-and-run capital of the world, the homeless caretakers of the world, as you see in my display, for the record. So I say, the basis of your justice and your judgment should end failing to corrupt government, Mr. City Attorney, failing to corrupt government. Mr. City Attorney, failing to corrupt government.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. That concludes public comment. What's before us?
Madam President, council has motions for posting and referral.
Posted and referral.
The desk is clear.
Thank you. Members, any announcements? Can we please stand for, Mr. Weezer, you have an announcement? I'm sorry, oh, Mr. Englander, go ahead.
Yeah, we don't have to stand for my announcement, but I just wanted to bring everybody's attention that May is, in fact, Motorcycle Safety Awareness Month, and in recognition, we want to encourage motorists, motorcycles to share the road. According to Department of Transportation, National Highway Traffic Safety Administration, four-thousand-six-hundred-and-sixty-eight cyclists' motorcycles died on American roads in two-thousand-and-thirteen, nearly five thousand. In fact, last year, just the San Fernando Valley alone, there were over three-hundred-and-fifty motorcycle collisions with fifteen fatalities. We want to remind drivers to be on the lookout for motorcycles at all times, to signal all lane changes and turns, constantly check their mirrors for blind spots before proceeding. Riders should drive extra defensively and provide enough space and time to respond to other drivers. Wear a DOT compliant helmet, use reflective tape and gear and be more visible. Bottom line is, share the road, watch out for motorcycles, watch out for pedestrians, be careful out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Englander and Mr. Cedillo. Did you have an announcement? No. No more announcements? Okay, can we please all stand for adjourned motions? To my left, adjourned motions on the left? No? On my right, Mr. Parks.
Thank you very much. I'd ask that we adjourn in memory of Louise Dickerson, who was born in November nineteen-twenty-three and passed away Friday, April two-thousand-and-fifteen, at the age of ninety-one. Miss Dickerson was born in Russell County, Alabama. She spent her first years of life in Russell County and then moved to Montgomery, Alabama, where she finished her high school education. She moved to Los Angeles, where she joined the Greater Ebenezer Baptist Church, and later joined Mount Tabor Missionary Baptist Church. Miss Dickerson was very active in the church and always attended Sunday School after the first church service. Miss Dickerson was a very energetic person. While working full-time, she attended nursing classes at night. She never took a job as a nurse, but she put the knowledge to use as an active member of the Mount Tabor Health Awareness Team and could be seen every Sunday wearing her nurse's uniform. Miss Dickerson was an active member of the Los Angeles Queen Allen Chapter Twenty-One of the Order of the Eastern Star. After retirement from the Macy's Department Store, she refused to sit at home. She worked part-time shifts in the senior citizen home. She was one of the most generous, caring and sharing persons that anyone knew. She loved cooking and sharing her food with her family. She leaves in her memory her son, Willie Pinnell, retired LAPD Deputy Chief, and her daughter-in-law, Beverly Pinnell, and a host of other family members. Funeral services were held Wednesday, April twenty-second, in Mount Tabor Missionary Baptist Church.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Mr. Coretts.
Thank you, Madam President. We recently lost major figures from the Star Trek Institution, including Leonard Nimoy and producer Harv Bennett. This past Friday, we lost Grace Lee Whitney, who wasn't a star, but if you remember the show, she was a surviving red shirt. Red shirts on Star Trek were the notoriously expendable, often unnamed, crew members who went on missions with Captain Kirk, Mr. Spock and the others, and were often killed off quickly in order to demonstrate the threat level that Kirk and the others faced. But Grace Lee Whitney, as yeoman Janice Rand, an assistant to Captain Kirk, was a rare surviving red shirt, and the tale of her survival is pretty interesting. She and her character had enough charismatic appeal the last eight episodes in the first season, and she was potentially on the verge of joining the more notable regular characters when she was inexplicably written out of the show. She would eventually return in the same role years later in the Star Trek films, and yes, she was a, so she was a surviving red shirt, but was a spent, what was especially interesting was that she survived in a more important way. While on the show, she had gotten hooked on diet pills trying to stay thin, and she also did some drinking, and those problems became far more pronounced when she left the series, which had devastated her. And so for the ten years following, she struggled severely with alcohol and drug problems, a troubled descent that landed her on the LA Skid Row. She was able to get into a twelve-step program and miraculously turned her life around. Among her supporters was Leonard Nimoy, who struggled with alcoholism himself. And she was cast by Gene Roddenberry in the first Star Trek film, and in three more, and then in the, the series Star Trek: Voyager, and her character eventually being promoted to Commander Janice Rand. She wrote in a nineteen-ninety-eight memoir, The Longest Trek, My Tour of the Galaxy, about her experiences, and she also did outreach to help those who face challenges similar to those that she faced. Her son said of her that she continued her fellowship work, dedicating her life to helping others find daily sobriety and a higher power out of addiction. Last week, she passed away in her home in Course Gold, California, at the age of eighty-five. And she's someone I will always think of when I watch a Star Trek film or see someone down and out, and know that you never need to give up on anyone, people can always come back.
Thank you very much. Any other adjourned motions? Seeing none, our meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.